All right, good evening, everyone. It's that time, it's now six o'clock. And how are you doing for the regular meeting of the Board of Education Thursday, November fifth, two thousand and twenty at six P M. With Cruz, Gagne, Hernandez, Ma, and Chief President for the record, Mr. Cruz, Mrs. Gagne, Mr. Ma, I part in the boardroom, and Miss Hernandez is present.
The board met in close session from five P M to five thirty-nine regarding conference with labor negotiators, A C T and C S C A, public employee discipline dismissal release, and public employee performance evaluation superintendent. No action was taken that requires public disclosure.
And Pat will lead us to the question, if you'll please stand. Take your hand over your heart, ready?
Like, of the United States of America.
Two, three, four.
Public employee dismissed.
Okay, move right along, item one C, comments, questions, representatives. Justin, how are you tonight?
Hello, I'm doing good, and you?
Good, thank you. What do you have for us?
Okay, I have my report ready. To the President of the Board, Mr. Schaefer, to the members of the Board, to the Superintendent, Dr. Enfield, and to the Cabinet, and as well as all our guests. Students have been work hard at work coming up with ideas about how to keep students connected and how to promote school spirit during distance learning. Students have come up with several ideas, which include virtual club rush promotional video, virtual rally, virtual campaign, clubs and organizations where students can interact with peers via Zoom, virtual spirit week way to promote school spirit. Students will begin implementing many of those ideas. For instance, students at Magnolia Junior High School are working on increased communication with their school, implementing motivational Mondays and announcements. More ideas will continue to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Moving on now to comments from employee representatives. I see that we have all of our groups tonight. So let's go ahead and start with Miss Walker from A C T, please.
Good evening, President Schaefer, Vice President Gagne, Board Clerk Hernandez, Board Members, Mr. Cruz and Mr. Ma, Superintendent Enfield, District Cabinet and Community. I just have a few remarks tonight. First, I'd like to acknowledge all the candidates that ran in the past school board election and say thank you for just being willing to commit, to invest your time and your energy to our school district. Also, I want to congratulate the three candidates that did win the election, Mr. Cruz, Mr. Ma, and Mr. Don Bridge, who will be joining the Board. A C T looks forward to working with you all. The second and last thing I have is to share that although it's been just a few weeks since the decision to return special education, small group cohorts to in-person instruction and students to have sports conditioning, the communication between A C T and the district has been ongoing and very much appreciated. So thank you to our site administrators and district staff, and that includes many departments, for including A C T members and work groups, for considering our suggestions, for listening to our concerns, and for answering our questions swiftly. We've been able to provide input and will continue to do so because, just like the rest of our C V U S D community, we want everyone, students and staff, to be safe and successful as we continue to pivot during this new normal. That's it for my comments. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gagne Hernandez, C S C A.
Good evening, President Schaefer, Board Members, Superintendent Enfield, Cabinet and Community. I wanted to thank, I wish we could do this in person, and look you each in the eye and to say thank you very much. Today, you guys will be voting on an increase to the health technician hours at the elementary school. This is something that we have, C S C A, and I believe everybody has really been advocating for, for our students. It is very much appreciated, and I wish it was under better circumstances, but again, it is very much appreciated. Along with Miss Walker is the reopening of the schools. Is, it seems like every day it's, we have multiple outbreaks or outbreaks at certain sites. I know the district is training everybody, is making sure that all P P Es are in place, but even with that, we continue to have these outbreaks at numerous sites. It is making staff at all levels feel a bit uneasy because of students returning next Monday. I know our members and A C T members and administration are eagerly awaiting their return, but it does make some of our staff very uneasy because of that. There are quite a few of, I don't remember exact, the exact number of candidates that ran for school board, but like Miss Walker, I would like to congratulate James Ma and Andrew Cruz for their reelection, and again, to welcome Don Bridge to the Board. Along with A C T and C S C A and Champ members, we eagerly look forward to working with all of you. And with that, that concludes my message.
Great, thank you very much. And Mrs. Barbara Beer.
Good evening, President Schaefer, School Board Members, Dr. Enfield, Cabinet and Chino Valley Community. Champ would like to recognize the special education educators, service providers, school site leaders, and then district departments who are all working collaboratively to welcome our special education students for in-person learning. Through extensive collaboration, we are prepping staff and our sites for a safe return for our students and staff members. We would especially like to thank Dr. Sherry Johnson, her team and the school nurses for their support in getting the needed training and supplies for us. Thank you to the C I I S and special education departments for their unwavering support as we worked through planning for a safe return. Thank you Greg Statura and his team for providing thermal imaging scanners so we can safely and effectively check each student as they arrive to school. We're very excited to have students on our campuses and truly appreciate how everyone is working together to make it excess, a success. Champ would also like to congratulate Mr. Da, Mr. Cruz, and Don Bridge for their election to the school board, and we're looking forward to working with them closely as we continue to lead our district into uncharted territory. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Beer. Thank you to all of our employee groups for joining us this evening. We'll move on now to comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. Were you now comments on items not on the agenda as noted in the public advisory posted in the agenda? Staff will now read it to the record, the names and comments of emails received during the specified window and in accordance with Board by one ninety-three twenty-three meeting conduct. The comments will be read in the order the email is received. Email comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Need than an unusual amount of email comments were submitted for any items the Board would hear after thirty minutes of comments. In the case of non-agenda items, the Board can, if it chooses, hear the remainder of the comments after all business has been conducted. And how many emails have you received for non-agenda items?
Twelve emails on non-agenda items. The first email is from Michelle Singleton. Bringing song back to Chino Hills High School. I am writing today in regards to bringing song back immediately to Chino Hills High School. Without doubt, our daughters have endured so much loss and change since the quarantine eight months ago. It is very frustrating, heartbreaking, unfortunate, and completely unacceptable that all of these girls have worked so hard to belong to this team, are still being told that they may not practice on campus. Why? We may not be C I F but have the synergy as one team. Song has competitions and they need to be on campus. That way, they learn what is needed, having time to learn and not be rushed, which will reduce injuries. They do not deserve to be put up any longer. Some surrounding districts are allowing C I F and visual performing arts back on campus for conditioning and practice. It has been so heartbreaking to stand by and watch as our students have normality torn from them. This is, this all took place on March thirteenth, twenty twenty. Don't you think eight months is long enough? Because of this loss, the mental health of many students is and has been suffering greatly. It is one hundred percent overwhelming as a parent to stand by and witness a depression take over my fifteen-year-old daughter's life. This depression is greatly spreading like wildfire among many of our students. Our kids need and deserve this. We can only do our best in being proactive to give them the care they need to not have this loss and deprivation affect them for many years to come. And our best would be giving them back their team. We need desperately to bring song back immediately. It is a sense of normality and an outlet for our daughters to be active and healthy, both physically and mentally. The generation that we as parents are working so hard to raise, to be young adults and to be proactive citizens of society, deserve this and nothing less. They are hardworking, deserving, and need to have an outlet. Please consider bringing our song team back as soon as possible. From Kevin Buscher. Please look into the real need to charge Sycamore Academy Chino Hills Charter School additional charges when we are in the middle of a pandemic and facing a funding issue for all schools. There needs to be a discussion face-to-face with all parties involved to come to a reasonable resolution. This is not the time to take money away that would be used to educate our children. I really think that shall is a word that is much for, much debate. That language definitely allow the district to not charge the school. From my information, this overage is not normally enforced, so that must mean it's not required by law to be enforced. So please make the right decision. Please make the right just decision to not charge a school already with limited funds. Please use your well-educated and reasoning skills to ask the important question of this overage really needed, especially at this time. The Board and District effort should be spent on ensuring all our schools are well-prepared and funded. Funded, thanks for your time and support, Kevin and Mary Buscher. From Luis Chavez, hello, Board Members. My name is Luis Chavez, and I am writing in support of Chino Hills High School song team returning to school for conditioning. I understand that since the song team is not recognized as a sport by C I F, it has been placed in the performing arts category. Therefore, our girls have not been cleared to return to school for sports conditioning. I feel this is unfair. My daughter conditions and trains at least ten hours a week. She does so to stay fit and ready to return to school, to return to sideline cheering, to perform well at competitions with her team. I see no reason why she shouldn't be able to do this safely following all recommended requirements with her team at school like the rest of the C I F sanctioned athletics, athletes. Just because song isn't C I F sanctioned does not mean my daughter and her teammates aren't athletes. They very much are athletes and should be able to train and condition at school. Please reconsider allowing the song team to condition at school. Thank you for your time and understanding. Lisa Droge. Dear Board Members, this letter in this response to the decision to send all small, to send small cohorts of special education students back to the classroom. I don't think those of you who voted yes realize how this was going to work. The premise was that the students needed to get back in school so that they could receive their services, but the public health guidelines that have, that have to be followed make this almost impossible. All you heard was small cohort without considering the guidelines or restrictions that would have to be followed. A small cohort is fourteen students at the elementary level, is too many, especially combined with social distancing, difficulty understanding personal space, and the fact that none of these students have been at, in an educational setting in eight months. Shame on all of you for not doing your due diligence and making an informed decision. Lisa Droge. Alfred and Erica Bertofa. Dear Dr. Enfield and District Board Members, I am respectfully asking that the Chino Hills song team be allowed to return for campus conditioning. The Chino Hills Spirit Leader Program is a nationally ranked, awarded, and recognized program for both cheer and song. The cheer team has been allowed back on campus for conditioning under C I F, however, song and cheer are under one program, spirit leaders. In order to maintain the high standard of excellence that our coaches have established, we need in-person training. As it stands, we are falling behind from schools in which we regularly compete against. It is disheartening to see my daughter unable to practice side-by-side with her teammates and friends. While many might not consider spirit leaders as athletes, I can assure you they train just as hard, if not harder, than any other sport on campus. It's near impossible for them to practice online. They need to practice as one team. The song team is small enough that they can train on campus without the safe, within the safety guidelines set by the district. I trust that you will make the decision that is best for the kids to get them back in school soon. I appreciate you taking the time to review my comment. Thank you. Diane Johnson. Dear Board Members, dear members of the School Board, I am writing this email on behalf of the Chino Hills High School song team. It has been brought to my attention that half of our spirit team, our spirit leader team, the cheer squad, is allowed back on campus as part of C I F to practice and condition for future seasons. The Chino Hills High School spirit leaders are one united team, cheer and song groups. It saddens me to see the Board make decisions that split the team and do not give our song leaders the same opportunity to condition in preparation for their competition season. It has also come to my attention that surrounding districts, even those in Los Angeles County, have all of their teams, C I S and visual performing arts back on campus to condition and practice. The surrounding districts did not split their teams or, or extracurricular activities when their decisions were made to encourage our students to continue in their sport or art. Our students have suffered this past year during the pandemic that stripped them of their sport and art form. They have not been able to condition, practice, or even see their coaches. Please, during this time of extremely low mental health, give our students the opportunity to practice to improve their positive mental health and to have social, emotional learning at a time when it is critical to their life. Please consider allowing the Chino Hills High School song team and other visual performing arts, regardless of C I F, regardless of C I F, continue to prosper, excel, and find mental well-being during this season, this serious time by giving them all the same opportunity to train and condition. Thank you for considering my email as you hopefully make a positive decision for our children and students. Sincerely, Diane Johnson. Dear members of the School Board, I am writing this email on behalf of the Chino Hills High School song team. It has been brought to my attention that half of our spirit leader team, the cheer squad, is allowed back on campus as part of C I F to practice and condition for the future season. The Chino Hills High School spirit leaders are one united team, song, cheer and song groups. It saddens me to see the Board make decisions that split the team and do not give our song leaders the same opportunity to condition in preparation for their competition season. It has also come to my attention that surrounding districts, even those in Los Angeles County, have all of their teams, C I F and visual performing arts back on campus to condition and practice. The surrounding districts did not split their teams or extracurricular activities when their decisions were made to encourage our students to continue in their sport or art. Our students have suffered this past year during a pandemic that stripped them of their sport and art form. They have not been able to condition, practice, or even see their coaches. Please, during this time of extremely low mental health, give our students the opportunity to practice to improve their positive mental health and to have social, emotional learning at a time when it is critical to their life. Please consider allowing the Chino Hills High School song team and other visual performing arts, regardless of C I F, continue to prosper, excel, and find mental well-being during this serious time by giving them all the same opportunity to train and condition. Thank you for considering my email as you hopefully make a positive decision for our children and students. Sincerely, Max Johnson. Katrina Henry. Spirit leaders operate as one team, although we are not C I F like cheer, song still has competitions and need to be on campus for conditioning with coaches and with all of our team members. Surrounding districts, including some in L A County, are allowing C I F and visual performing arts back on campus for conditioning and practice, and we would like Chino Valley to allow both. If song is being considered a visual performing art, our children work hard to participate in their extracurricular activities, which contributes to a healthy mental state, please allow them to work towards mental health. Colleen Shirley. Good evening, Chino Valley Unified School District Board Members. I'm writing to you in regards to allowing the song team spirit leaders at Chino Hills High School to return to sports conditioning immediately. Spirit leaders, cheer and song operate as one team, although song is not considered C I F, we still have many competitions and need to be on campus and conditioning with our coaches and all of our team members. Many surrounding school districts, including some in L A County, are allowing C I F and visual performing arts back on campus for conditioning and practice. It doesn't make sense for cheer to be allowed to come back to campus and not song. We are one team. Band and color card have been allowed back as well. C V U S D needs to allow all of our spirit leaders back on campus. By splitting up our team, we are only causing more undue isolation. The girls don't deserve this. It is unseparable. Our students have endured so much loss and change since the beginning of this pandemic on March thirteenth, twenty twenty. Please consider the effects that sports have not only on the physical health, but the mental health of our students. Our children work hard to participate in their extracurricular activities. This is an outlet for them, a sense of normality with everything going on in the world right now. As a parent of a student and member of the song team, I see firsthand what all of this isolation is doing to our children. I urge you to please consider allowing the song spirit leaders to return to campus as soon as possible. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Shirley. Michelle Banker. Thank you for your time and consideration. I am requesting that our spirit leader song teams be allowed to go back to campus for conditioning. They are a part of the spirit leader program and can adhere to the COVID safety guidelines that have been set forth by the district for cheer and athletics. Our cheer teams have returned under C I F, yet our song teams have been told that they must wait because we are being placed under performing arts. Our song teams waited while cheer started first due to C I F having priority, but now our girls are being held back when we are closer in association to athletics than to performing arts. The spirit leader song teams should be allowed to return back to campus under the same guidelines as athletics. If they are not being allowed to return to campus yet, I would like some clarification and discussion as to why the song teams are not being allowed back and what is the reasoning for placing us under performing arts when we report to the athletic director. Thank you. Stephanie Parker. Dear Board Members, please consider allowing Chino Hills High School song leaders to return to school for conditioning. My daughter has been dancing cheering for several years of her life and is really missing out on being able to condition and practice with her team. Song is a competitive sport, just like everything else, and it takes a lot of competition, just like cheer, to keep these girls in shape and ready to compete and perform at games. Please give them a chance and let them get back to doing what they love. Thank you. Janet Lee, Janine Lee. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to keeping our kids safe and well-educated. I know your job is difficult, which is why I'm sure you would want to know when an educational opportunity is being unfairly denied to some students. At the last board meeting, the Board voted to allow sports, sports band and cheer to begin meeting in person, again with appropriate safeguards, while denying those with same educational opportunities to performing arts students. The purpose of my letter is to ask that this inequality be fixed tonight by handle, including the performing arts programs, choir, theater, and dance in the previously approved sports plan. For months, many parents and teachers have asked that performing arts students not be forgotten in any reopening plan, including comments to this Board. After the last board meeting, when a performing arts teacher asked the district why these students weren't included, he was told the district didn't, didn't realize we wanted a seat at the table. Untrue. Sadly, performing arts students were denied a seat at the table, but honestly, there is no student who would have to beg for a seat at the table. Much like athletes who do not only play in games but also condition and work on team building, performing arts students need time together for the same things. For example, a choir not only needs to sing but to work on vocal exercises and choreography. Just recently, our choir missed a virtual competition because they had no opportunity to rehearse in person to prepare their video submission. Please don't deny them future opportunities. These kids deserve the same opportunity to improve their access to scholarships and college admission as well as their mental health, just like athletes do participating in sports. Please value these kids. Equal treatment is all we ask, allowing the performing arts kids to meet with all of the strict safety guidelines recommended for the physical health so we can also improve their mental health and have equal access to educational opportunities in C V U S D. Thank you for your time and consideration. That was the final email comment.
Thank you, Pat. Now we want to changes and deletions. Do we have any changes and deletions tonight?
Following changes are on the agenda. Item two, A one, October fifteen minutes, under comments from employee representatives. Correct Barbara Bearden to read Champ, President. Item two E one, Certified Classified Personnel Items, page one sixteen, under promotion. Correct the spelling of Justin De Azvedo Correa so that De Azvedo is spelled correctly as D E A Z E B E D O. There are no further changes and deletions.
Thank you very much. As you noted, now we want to consent items. Pat, did you receive any email, comments, reference consent?
None.
Board members, do we have any polls? Mr. Cruz? Ms. Hernandez?
No, I do not.
This is Gagne.
Yes, item two, B two, starting on page thirty-two.
Two D two, page thirty-two. Hang on.
That's it.
And I have none. The remainder of the consents may have motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ma and second by Mrs. Gagne. We will now vote. Mr. Cruz, yeah. Mrs. Gagne?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Gagne?
Aye.
And I'm a yes, preferential?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero, preferential voting yes. Now move to item two D two, page thirty-two. Mrs. Gagne?
A vote.
Second.
And Mrs. Gagne, go ahead.
Thank you. I just need to recuse myself of this item as a shareholder at Carlton Field. We have a confidence of interest.
Motion by Ms. Ma and second by Mr. Hernandez. We will now vote. Mr. Cruz? Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ma?
Aye.
Am I a yes? Oh, I'm sorry, preferential?
Yes.
I have the passes four zero, preferential voting yes.
Two D two.
All right. Move right along now. There are information items to, we have any questions from up here on the Board, reference any of the information items? Ms. Hernandez, you have any information, any questions on the information items?
No, I do not.
I see none from up here. We'll move on then to communications. We're not communications, Mr. Cruz.
So I'll progress though. What is all? What is the good news that comes to other activities, others in sports? Such as, we're talking about song and cheer.
And we're working with the, the high schools and looking at bringing those back. That doesn't need a board action. Talk with the high school principals. We're looking at that and we'll have more information for those groups from the school sites, but I just ask the community to clearly understand that there is a limited amount of space and time there, so it will require everybody to work together and to share that space as they do that because there's a lot of groups. And they're also, this is the first week that we had the fire, so the sports got canceled the following week, and so they're still working everything out and making sure that their processes are going smoothly. And I know district staff have been out there to, to observe and they've done a fantastic job. And so that we're working all that process out, but we'll be expanding that to other groups at the high schools.
Thank you. I would really short agree. You know, it's been eight months, you know, without school, and the impact is affecting children. You could imagine, you know, ten, fifteen years from now, this will be a psychological experiment that is being done with this, what's happening to our children. And hopefully, it doesn't affect our children. But we know the greatest impact is affecting the poor and the minorities. We want to open up. But you know, the key factor is, is you parents. You gotta push us, push us over to the Board can be forced to open up next year. And it will be the only way that this will occur for our children. It is really time to open up now. And hopefully, we can prepare for next year. We need you parents to start, to start pushing the Board. It's time to open up. Thank you.
Mr. Ma? Okay, yeah, all those emails, yeah. Thank you so much for sending those emails from Chino Hills High School. The songs and spirit leaders, parents, I do agree that we do not need to split spirit leaders. So I see that our staffs are working, looking into that. And as we get used to opening up the programs, I'm sure all the fine arts will have time to be opened up as well. I had visited Ayala High School, New Science Building, it was really great. Mrs. Yarwood was, was very proud of that building and she highly thanked Greg Stetra and our cabinet members, Dr. Park and, and just everybody who was involved. There was a plenty of safety measures. There was a distance between all the desks and, and chairs. And matter of fact, new technology was there, and there was an awesome experiment, experience looking at those buildings with high technologies that offers great experiments for all the students to come. High technologies that offers great experiments for all the students to come. Uh, I'd like to thank the parents who quit. Send us an email regards to Sycamore. School where there had been a great, um, educational experience. In that school and I believe we'll come up with. Good solutions to help all the students who's involved. So I think the patience is a virtue. Let's work out. First, our pandemics first and continue to pray for. Letting our students come to school and breathe the fresh air and meet their friends and meet their love. Teachers and we'll continue to have that hope. Thank you for special those students that who is going to this pandemics. I know for myself, I have not experienced that. It's very tough, both physically and mentally, but, um. Regardless, uh, have that hope and have that. Your mission and your goal to finish your education. Because you are the true hope of our nation. So never, never give up. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez.
Okay, so, um. I know that Dr. Enfield has already clarified regarding the restoration of the performing arts and that's really exciting. But I had been asked. Prior to tonight's meeting, why my request for the discussion item that I had brought forward. At our last October meeting wasn't on the agenda. And so I do want to share publicly that Dr. Enfield. You know, I had already asked that question and Dr. Enfield shared with me that. There was no need to have it on the agenda because the new guidelines expanded. Being able to return our performing arts. And therefore the board action at the last meeting allowed us to extend conditioning to these groups. And so that's why it wasn't on the agenda. And it wasn't for any other reason other than Dr. Enfield. Believed that we had already addressed the item. So it wasn't that there, we didn't want, um. These groups to have an opportunity at the table. It's just that he had, um. Believe that our decision at the prior meeting had already resolved the concern. I I do want to also emphasize that Dr. Enfield has, you know, shared already. That the principals will have discussions with all of the groups and the principals will have to lay out a schedule. Because not all groups will be able to be outdoors at the same time. But it, we do want to ensure that all of the activities return, but that they follow safety guidelines for conditioning. And and that's what we need to adhere to. And so I I just think that it's. It's positive news, especially if you're a senior who wants to return on campus. And there is one letter that I I won't read the whole thing, but I do want to acknowledge the students who who took the time to send me. Their concern and and I'm glad that it came to a positive resolution. And so I'm just going to read. A a small portion of the letter. I am writing today in an effort to begin to reclaim my senior year from all the outward forces that have so brutally affected us. The toll this pandemic and school closures has taken on the quality of learning, the diminishment of normal activities. And most importantly, the toll taken emotional and psychological well being of both teachers and students alike. I kindly request that the arts are allowed to reconvene to modified and social distanced rehearsals. But that's conditioning. To conditioning. This year, it has been increasingly difficult to remain hopeful and remain energetic. I love choir being together, hearing the full product and beauty of what is choir. To be completely gone is incredibly saddening. I cannot fully express how much I miss it and how much the presence and now its absence of choir has affected me. That being said, I am fully aware of the seriousness of the coronavirus and the precautions needed to be taken when possibly reconvening. I feel as if it is possible to safely return after school, perhaps outside and standing far apart. Though this is not ideal, it is a solution that at least allows us to replicate more closely on what choir would be like in a normal school year. And to be together again as one entity. Sincerely, Wen Fei Chang Fan, Chino Hills High School Senior. He, um, the letter adds, and though I cannot speak for all of my members and all of the arts on campus. Here is a collective list of names, virtual signatures that stand in solidarity with my request and my words. Pierre Godison, Arwen Lizell Senetin, Katrina Hess, Lauren D. Ambrojo, Yolene Vedana, Paige Noblet. Erin David, Nathan Parsons, Vanessa Wu, Emily Liu, Christian Pleat, Catherine Lynn. Owen McLendon, Carmina Therese Garcia, Isabel D. Antono, Hannah Gonzalez. Kaiva Quinn, Chloe Parks, Manal Khan, Daniel HSIH. Kyra, Fei Chang Feng, Nimra Saleem, Sunny Chen, Wesley Nguyen, Tara Crump. Grace Su, Audrey Sagada, Shanaya Beckett, Leila Isa and Evelyn Lee. So I'm excited for all of the performing arts participants, all of the activities directors. That we now get to restore some sense of normalcy to our Chino Valley Unified Students. And I just want to close. By saying that I'm not on video tonight because, um. I have endured a a loss of a very close friend. She's an Ayala High School parent. Her son is a senior. At Ayala High School. So I'm going to close this meeting. By recognizing and acknowledging Karina Moda. And Gregory Moda, class of 2021 and the complete Moda family. And with that, good night.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Mrs. Donia.
No comment.
Dr. Enfield? No comment. Just have a few things to say. I'm not going to be. I'm not going to reiterate what my colleagues about Dr. Phillips says about reading back performing arts students. But I would just like to clarify one, one note that was in several of the. Letters and that it wasn't that we were trying to separate any groups, leave any groups out or. Make any students feel like they were forgotten. When we approved the action at the the last meeting, when we approved it, that was what was allowed by the state at the time. Since then, the state has. Reviewed, they've reviewed and reissued different guidelines and now allows for performing arts. So like Dr. Enfield said, the district is in the. In the process of reviewing those guidelines and providing direction to our our high schools. So we can get some of those other student groups back. Again, it was not deliberate action taken by this board to to leave any student group out. We want to get as many of them back as we can, but we also have to do it within within the guidelines provided by the state. The second thing is, I would just like to personally thank all the candidates that recently ran for school board seats. I thank you for your willingness to put the work in, benefit our students and for the betterment of our district. Hopefully we'll stay involved in one way or another, either through committees or at school sites. I'd also like to send a congratulations to. Board Member-Elect Mr. Donbridge, we look forward to working with you. With that, I have no other comments and we'll adjourn to a reunion in the Board of Education at 6:30.